Agents in invocation, would you please stand for me?
Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please guide our work this evening as we come together to take action on these items, to set an agenda for our next term, to do the work of our friends and neighbors. We ask that we work well together, that we have good insights and good outcomes. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Item three, consideration of the meeting agenda. Does anyone have any additions, deletions to tonight's agenda? Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Zoller, supported by Snoyk, that we approve tonight's agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, say no. We have approved tonight's agenda. Any public comment? Seeing none. Item five, inquiry of conflict of interest. Board members having reviewed tonight's agenda. I do note that there is an item regarding compensation to two of the trustees, so I would just note that their involvement with that and ask for them to remove themselves from the room and from that item when it is before us, without objection. Is there agreement on fellow board members? So when that item is up, they can go to the lobby. We'll have our discussion and then return further main agenda items. Any other potential conflicts or interested items? Seeing none. Item six, approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion for these items?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Support moved by Snoyk, support by Hermanette, that we approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. I do note that we do have reports from board and staff members. Hope you found time to read those. I found them to be quite helpful and do appreciate the time and effort that goes into them from those departments. Item 10, any questions on items in the reports? Seeing none. Item 10A, this is a motion to approve a work order from the Kent County Road Commission for non-motorized pathway work in conjunction with 68th Street and Whitneyville traffic signal in the amount of $90,000. I'll tee up a top level and then I'll throw it to Allison for additional. The Kent County Road Commission will be installing a traffic signal for traffic control at that intersection of Whitneyville, 68th Street. We recently constructed a trail which brings people to the east side of Whitneyville, but a potential draw and connectivity point is to the Campout Corners with the pizza, Mike's Pizza and the Growler Phil and Campout Corner. All those, I think, have the opportunity to, between the ice cream place and sandwiches and all the things there, to draw people from the trail. I think now they're kind of getting across the best they can. With a light there, we do have the opportunity to put a crosswalk there over site conditions, which requires some reconstruction of trail that we just recently constructed. So while that's unfortunate, I do think it will result in improved trail from a safety standpoint and a user standpoint and connectivity standpoint. And we can do the work with conjunction when there's already going to be a disruption. So in that sense, we're minimizing disruption at that intersection. Allison, additional thoughts?
Yes, so we began talking about this project about a year ago. They brought it to our attention. And we looked at various areas to put a crosswalk. However, they wouldn't have been close to the light and therefore they were just considered too dangerous. And the reason we were looking at alternatives for crossing was because of the pathway sloping. It's much higher than the street. The reason that the path wasn't brought down and leveled out initially was because there are gas lines and internet lines under it. This design and work in this quote includes moving those lines, lowering them. I know that trustees Zoller asked about why they were using concrete instead of asphalt. According to Todd, it's because it's easier to do the ramps with. But I think it is something that is definitely, something the township should approve moving forward because it will make that intersection safer and it also connects our trail to businesses and where people can park safely.
Okay. Board discussion on the design cost, timing.
I think it's great to have the connectivity to Campout Corner, move the ice cream there. There's people outside all the time. I think it goes very, very nicely with that. Getting them across to be safe is, you know, that's what we strive to do, so.
Wish we'd have done it when we did the path, you know, that was...
At the time, we were told...
I think that was an engineering oversight or...
Well, it was the road commission had said that it didn't meet warrants at that time. So the idea of putting in a crosswalk wasn't something that we were able to do. So now it has and so we can move forward. Absolutely. It's sad to tear up any trail, let alone two-year-old trail or one and a half-year-old trail. But I do think the disruption will create an improvement, so. Thoughts on the materials, engineer's perspective?
His explanation based on, I read it, it's fine.
Alright. The portions that are concrete makes sense. Alright.
All good.
Alright. Any, is there a motion regarding this item?
Make a motion to approve, support.
Moved by Snoyk, supported by Hermanette, to approve the traffic signal and pathway improvements at 68th Street in Whitneyville. And that would occur this summer, correct?
Yes, the project will be bid out this month and then depending on the contractor's schedule, we're hopeful that they start this spring. But again, depends on who the contract is awarded to.
So it's nice that we're getting an improvement at that intersection. As a daily user, you know, it's a high use. So in addition to the trail, I actually think that stoplight will help the movement of traffic and people having to make left turns and right turns and some of the confusion that happens in that area, so. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, say no. That item is approved. Alright, we've come to item 10B. Has trustee Snoyk and Zoller could...
Does that take a vote for us to leave or can we just go?
Nope, you can just recuse and excuse yourself. Alright, board members, this was before us last month. Somewhat as a general discussion regarding compensation and pay for board members. It then became more focused on the interim service that had been provided by trustees Snoyk and Zoller when we were without a maintenance person. There was discussion regarding that focus on what level, should they be compensated and if so, at what level for that service? Retrospectively, and then I think we should discuss prospectively if there is a need for additional services. And then I also see that because there are cell phones and so on, or there was a term of service, it's also being requested that we provide a cellphone stipend for those months. And I believe going forward, which was an option, which was given to all board members, I believe, previously. And so they are now asking to be retroactively, or we are being asked to retroactively compensate them for the use of their cell phones for that time of service as well. As the discussion evolved last month, and I realized that it was specific to them and not general to the policy, noted the, that they shouldn't be included in any votes because it affects them directly. So that was after we had already asked for recusals. Anyways, we then discussed and in essence disagreed in the sense that there was a, not a majority vote regarding their compensation or amount. And so it's back to us, all four of us, to have this discussion. It still would be a three-member majority to decide on the specific issue. But I think it'd be helpful, at least for the four of us, then we'd have to include all of us as far as general discussion. But if we could start, I guess, with a general discussion of the retroactive service by the trustees. And then we can move forward with the cellphone and the prospective service discussion as well. That's at least how it asks that we guide, so.
Was there a amount, monthly hourly amount in here? I didn't see anything.
It's attached.
I see the, I see that. I just don't see the dollar rate, you know.
Well, we did not set a rate. So I had made a motion in last board meeting, was it $15?
$18.
$18. That failed at a split vote. The explanation from Mr. Robertson, and I won't speak for Joanie, one because she's here tonight. She didn't make an explanation at the vote, but Mr. Robertson thought that was too low. That it should be similar to the employees we've had in that position, which would be more of the $25 rate. So the explanation of his opposition to the motion for, and we didn't have specific hours at that time either. So it was kind of a blank check, at least the math wasn't complete. So we now have at least certainty on the hours they are asking, or at least they have provided. And we can discuss compensation at all and if so, what level. I do want to give Allison the opportunity to throw in anything that I might have missed.
So I intentionally left the number blank because Treasurer Robertson said that the number should be determined by the board and not by me putting a number, and that's why I took it out. Nolan, when he was in this position, he made 25, 45 per hour. So I think that's more in line with what Dick was talking about, that it should be more in line with what we paid the staff to do the work. However, it is up to the board to decide what that per-hour rate would be. And then when you look at their hours, the first one is Greg. He worked 81.25 hours and Rick worked 61 hours. So they are just asking for you to determine if they can be compensated and then also determine the rate per hour.
The only, I will only, I guess, I will point out that there are some dates where it appears they work together. And when, in the past, whether it was Nolan or Mr. Patterson, we had a singular person providing this, so. Even capacity had the same amount where now it's costing you more. But at that point, there's cost and value, but I'm just pointing out that there appears to be days where rather than have one person on the machine, this is largely snowmover, it appears we had multiple people working as a crew.
And I can speak to that, too. I know that there was an issue with the motor on the machine that releases the salt. They ended up having to replace it and it took both of them to get it off. So they did have some issues like that along the way.
I'll just speak to last month when I was a no vote. And my vote for no was simply because we had no idea what the hours were, you know. So we would have been voting on what, you know. So that's why I voted no, because I don't think that was right.
For purposes of discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we compensate them for the hours submitted at the 25, 45 hour rate.
I personally think that's high. I'm more comfortable in the $20 range, but that's just...
If there's not a second, I will allow it to die. Is there a, again, is there disagreement that they should be compensated?
No.
Okay. Does someone want to make a suggestion? Because I will support it.
I, like, I think those guys do a great job, but I think if we need to have this, this should be, this should be a one-off. This should be something that we were in this situation. We should not be in this situation again. If we're going to do this in the winter, we should hire somebody, they should come in and it's a job, so.
We're getting there.
To me, I think this is something, thank you very much for the guys that fit in. I think we need to compensate them fairly. I don't think we need to match the rate of what the job is itself. So I think if we give them 20 bucks an hour, I think that'd be fair. My motion would be, I think we pay them $20 an hour at the hours they submitted.
Okay. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, discussion on that.
I'm just wondering, should we have something in our motion that states that it's for the hours already worked?
Yes, I believe that was the motion.
Was that your motion? Okay.
For, so if we want to put a number to it, it would be trustee Snoyk at $81.25. I'm sorry, 81 and a quarter hours, trustee Snoyk at 61 hours at a rate of $20 an hour.
Okay.
That is a motion by Mr. Hermanette, supported by Mr. Bradshaw. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, no. And that is the item. Is it agreed that we should bring in the trustees for the general discussion on, because I don't believe it's only to them?
The only thing I would bring up maybe before we bring them back.
Oh, the stipend issue.
They probably had some fuel expense too and I guess I would assume they're eligible if they track their mileage to be reimbursed for that as well as the phones. So that's not necessarily on here, but I think that's already a township policy, so.
Mileage is available. I don't think we need a motion on that, but we'll recognize that any mileage any of us incur is eligible for submission.
Do we need to alter the motion with the phone also because they didn't say that?
Well, let's make it a separate motion, separate discussion, so. Team, that one up. The township has discussed use of phones. It's kind of a common everyday occurrence. Some of us have them provided by our employer. Others are providing them themselves and use them for all elements of their life. We did create a general policy, I believe, for all employees, but certainly for board members to receive a monthly stipend for cellphone upon request. Their request, and that was approved...
Last year or something.
In August.
In August of last year. If you don't request it, you don't get it. They, in essence, have made the form, they've submitted their forms in February and they're asking for it to be retroactive to the time they began doing these duties. I'll weigh in. My personal view is that everyone had the opportunity and you have the opportunity at any time to start that earning. And I believe that's the best policy because we could have other staff saying, well, I use my phone every day and been doing it for the last year. Could I do it the same? I think it sets a precedent of retroactivity where it should be proactively. And they can continue receiving it. I believe all of us use our phones, check emails, talk to each other. So I have no problem with them availing themselves of it, but I do with the retroactive. At any time, they could have submitted the forms and it's incumbent upon them, certainly your 401K match or anything like that. It's on you to avail yourself of potential benefits from your employer.
The other discussion I want to just get out and just make sure, see what the board feels about it is, I think, I want to make sure we're not setting a precedent either, you know what I mean? And I think that we've got to be very clear in the sense that if we have, if we have things like this come up, it's up, the board can decide, do we need to have emergency help, if you will? Or do we have the time to actually get somebody that's doing the job? I just don't want all of this stuff you do and we've got people going on the parade route and putting up candles and this kind of bags. Are we going to open up Pandora's box and now people are...
We're going to get there. We're on the cellphone right now and that's the next, the very next thing. And I think all of us can be part of that discussion in fairness. So this is personal compensation to those trustees. I make a motion that we approve, or that we simply, we don't allow for retroactivity of the cellphone stipend, but that they, I assume they've been receiving it since February.
Yes.
That it doesn't need our approval. So I'd simply say, take no action to approve retroactivity and just let the policy be that you must submit and it's proactive. I don't think we need a motion unless you want to be on the record that that is the policy, clarifying what the policy is. But I believe in practice, that is a policy. Once you submit, you begin receiving that stipend. Alright, I think we are good. Ms. Lindsay, would you ask? Thank you. Now, Allison, did you find a Word document for the strategic plan that we can pull up or no?
Yes, if, let me try to send it to you and if it works for you, or do you want to use my computer?
Let's just plug your computer in here when you get to that item.
She's looking outside. I don't think they're outside.
Maybe they were serious about the coffee shop.
I think they went, I think they went down through the...
Could they be in the...
Maybe in the office part, maybe. I thought I heard the door click.
Gentlemen, alright. It's over, too. Is this upside down?
They come in with all different types of computers, too, in the office and I'm...
Hello? Ms. Lindsay, I was in the parking lot. She's jealous.
She's looking for you out there.
She took us serious when I was going for coffee.
We did not go outside.
Sorry, they went into the office. Thank you. Alright, we are continuing our discussion on compensation, general discussion on compensation for duties performed. Dale, you wanted to have this discussion, so why don't you start?
No, I just, I just want to make sure that this is viewed from a board standpoint, that we're not setting a precedent. Because I think it's appreciated the work that was done, but I almost viewed it as, that was like coming in and helping. We didn't have anything. But now that we're learning from that, we've got to make sure that next year, if we're going to do those jobs, we hire somebody to come in and do them, you know. So we already have it ahead of time where we're aggressively handling what we think is going to come up before we're, uh-oh, who's going to do this?
We have a person. He's going to need more training. He's going to need some, some help getting things organized, not a lot of hours. But I think, you know, he can take off running after he gets it.
Do you think he'll be able to do these November, December stuff that you guys were doing next year?
I think he can do that. He's going to, you know, it's going to take him more, more time. You know, and some of that's, you know, and if we're talking about, some of the hours in November was prepping the equipment, repairing the equipment, going, you know, we had an alternator that was out in Kubota.
We, you know. Anyway, well, no, he's asking the questions, so I'm...
But when it comes time to plowing and things, you know, on a three or four inch day, one person can probably do it in three and a half or so hours. You know, if there's no hiccups, that's over at, you know, basically the sidewalks, the library and then doing the, when the dog parks open, we do that, just the parking lot part and then sidewalks all the way down near the bridge.
The question is training of the new individual. Do we want trustees involved with that? Or is there an alternative to training this individual? And then if this person needs assistance, should that be trustee? I think we reached the level in a decision regarding past service, but now we're looking prospectively going forward. So that's, has been expressed that this person will need some training. The question is, is trustees the appropriate people? Or are there others who could do this? Or is it on the job? Frankly, I'd raise the question, why wasn't that one of the qualifications of hire? That they have some familiarity with equipment and plow trucks and things like that.
Well, my personal opinion is it should not be trustees that are doing that. I mean, unless, unless it's, we're posting a job and they want to apply. If I want to go apply for the job, as we posted, then I think, okay, I'm applying for the job. But if it's, I don't think we should be doing it on a fixing temporary basis. We need to have these jobs. Who's doing it? How it's going to be done? So we're never put in a situation where Greg's out, he's on vacation. No, we can't get the alternator off or something like, I mean, we should have people that are, that's their job and what they're doing.
And I feel like we have, we have a capable manager who our new person answers to. They've now come up with this Google Doc thing. If any of us have issues for him to take care of, it goes through that. I think, let's streamline. Isn't that the reason we hired a manager? You know, and she's handling it. So and not, again, nothing against you guys and all the work that you've done. I think it's been great, but it's not your job, you know.
I have no problem being done today. I think yours. We're going to spend extra money teaching somebody that Rick and I can teach for, in a tenth of the time. You know, our manager doesn't know what was done in the, in there. As we were told, figure it out yourselves, and that's what we figured out last fall. And I started in September and took over that one, you know, and there's no hours for that. There's stuff that should be pointed out to him, that if you want to hire, you know, a plumber to come, do something that's going to take half the time, a third of the time.
Well, no, I think, I'm just worried we need to be in front of it. Yeah, I don't think we should ever be paying bills out there in arrears that, okay, now we're going to, I mean, I don't, were we planning on paying this the whole, I'm fine that we're paying it, but were we planning on paying this the whole time? Or did it just come up of...
It's been sitting there. It was supposed to be discussed in November and it got dropped. Or pushed back, so.
Well, that, those are my thoughts. Again, I'm just appreciative that you guys were able to do that. I don't know if that's something you want as a regular job or, I mean, that's hitting me a little bit by surprise, but if that's what you're saying.
I mean, our hours here are through beginning of March, so we should be, I mean, in, started in...
We should not have to help him do the plowing anymore. He should be able to do it, unless we got a foot of snow, in wet snow.
When did he start?
Sometime in February, early February or late February. Late February.
I guess, I'm in general, no, I'm in agreement that this interim service was much needed, should be compensated. Well, now has been approved for compensation. But I think we need to have a clean break and that the hired individual either meets our expectations and has the abilities or doesn't. And we either augment that with contracted service, whether it's lawn care, plumbing, irrigation. What they can't do, we'll either have to pay and then we'll say, boy, it sounds like we hired the wrong person because we're hiring out everything. What, you know, are they just a laborer? Or they will show that they have the ability to manage the position in our facilities? So I, I do think it just creates a perceptual issue we want to distance ourselves from that any one of us can kind of create opportunities for income. Because that's not what's occurring, but it could appear that anytime they want to show up, they can, you know, it was the beer money discussion last, last time. And they saved us in a time that was needed and I would publicly stand up and defend that. But I don't think having a, even the training period creates a good luck.
I agree with that. But again, we're very lucky to have you two that stepped in and did that. I mean, I look at that and think...
And both of you have been doing that for a decade, when it comes to facilities, when it comes to machinery, when it comes to fire department. I think you bring a technical knowledge and we get that as part of your engagement. Or we won't get it, similar to an engineer or someone who understands elections and administration. So I think we all bring a skill set. We can choose not to do that. But I think I would not approve a continued compensation even to help train this new person. They need to find and figure out the job.
I'm going to agree with that, too. I mean, I do think that's, it does make me wonder if this person is the right person for, you know.
It's totally fine. There's, there's things that, you know, he's, you want, he's going to have to, I'm going to train him no matter what. To just hire a professional that knows nothing about, that, or hire this guy, he doesn't know where the valves are. He doesn't know where different things are, you know, and I'll train him no matter what, so we'll just put it that way.
Personally, I could get, you know, maybe compensation for like four hours of training, something that's got a hard cap on it and, you know, reasonable. And it might take 20, I don't know. But, you know, I want to acknowledge that there is some crossover. And in a perfect world, we would have awesome as-bills and, you know, everything's here on the network, new person. It's here, but that's not the world that we're in, so.
Yeah, I think I would agree with that, too. This is what we got ahead of us, but...
I don't think there's any question that he is capable. I think, though, to speak to Greg's point, that he is, we don't want to basically just let him loose without knowing where things are located or where things are. So there is value in showing him. But once he's, once he knows, then he needs to be allowed to do his job.
Yeah, and I guess I look at that and think I agree with that. I'm supped then, but I look at 80 hours or two weeks of being and I would assume he's trained. I mean, I...
80 hours?
Well, I'm just going by the hours and stuff like that. Well, when did we, when did he start?
End of February.
Okay, alright. So he, you haven't had any chance to even train him yet?
And we haven't turned on the...
Yeah.
irrigation, things like that, so there will be things. But this person is also gonna be asked, I assume, to service the library, to service township hall. So either they're going to be able to, I mean, the last person didn't have training, they came on board and figured it out. And so either this person will have the ability to do that, or to call in professionals. Yep, call in a plumber, call in an irrigation person, and it might be a little more expensive, but I do think that is how. It's like when you buy a house, either figure it out, or you call on someone to help you.
Yeah.
Either you're capable of figuring it out, or are you calling someone who has specific experience? So, I, I want to resist even unless it's just out of, you know, good nature and, you know, continued contribution, that we don't compensate anymore, is where I'm at. You can make a motion, we can consider it, but I, I think we've made a clean break, and we ought to continue to distance ourselves from that. Is there any other matters? We discussed the cell phone, we discussed the compensation for retroactive service, and it does not appear. For another time, we can discuss, I, I guess, and Dick, and knowing he wasn't gonna be here, talked about, he is open, and so this is another issue. I know that, for instance, on the Luminary Walk, Johnny puts in a ton of time. I, you know, have shown up to be a volunteer, not putting as much time as certainly Johnny kind of has taken ownership of it. But Fourth of July, we all put in hours in a long day in planning, we all do put in time. Do we need a policy, or is that, again, part of our service and it's voluntary? I know Mr. Bradshaw attends metro council meetings, and Dale, you know, assists on trails. So there are things all of us do that have value, that are compensated.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's, we were talking about earlier, it's like, I hate to set a precedent of, I just want to make sure we, whatever we're doing, we're doing it ahead of time, we're, we're making a common, this is what we're doing, so people don't stop doing the volunteering and helping out at the parades and the different things. So I think that's what makes our community and everything run so smoothly as it is, so.
Been doing it for twenty years, so, ain't gonna matter.
All right, I believe that concludes our agenda item. Item ten C is a work session, let me look at the time, seven thirty. And that's that we, well, we'll go no longer than forty-five minutes, let's see if we can do it in thirty.
How about thirty?
Well, let's see where we go. Let's negotiate here. In reviewing our strategic objectives for the past year, I want to first do a checking with those, and see if they're completed, see if we want to amend them, see if we want to delete them. So, and then certainly we can add new, so I will do the best I can as we go. Item objective one was construct and expand the regional trail network and enhance park facilities, so trails and parks. Says create a plan for currently owned park properties, including the initial design with Kent County Parks. We do have park plans, at least conceptual plans. I wouldn't say that, you know, they're not bid ready, but we certainly have conceptual plans for these parks. We may want to make amendments to those when and if we get to the point, but I would say we at least have conceptual plans for those. Now, throw to that, the, you know, Andronicole River Trail Park, there's even conceptual plans for that. So I'd say future, hopefully anticipated parks have plans, so maybe we are good with that, unless you believe there's a next step, or.
Is there any sort of timeframe on those that you are aware of?
I would say Kent County, I believe, is putting some improvements towards both Two Rivers and Riverbend. We can report back with what those improvements are in timeframe, but I do know that they have some plans, and I thought they were putting some in the next budget for that.
They just announced, did you see the announcement yesterday of like nine projects?
I didn't see that.
It's all in northeast and northwest side.
Okay, I thought there was some funding for our parks in their recently approved budget.
I believe it's Two Rivers, I think Riverbend is part of their larger plan, when they want to go out for millage in a few years. But Two Rivers, they want to do some work, I think, this year.
All right, I will report back on that. I would say that I do believe that we could accelerate some of these with township funding. So maybe we could discuss a budget and cost share with Kent County on these, so that we might know, sort of like road funding, if you bring your checkbook, sometimes you get to go to the front of the line, and they get more bang for their buck, and so I would like to, I'll add that to, to this as well. So I'm just taking notes here, and I'll try to send it updated.
I'm on the capital improvement committee for the county, and I can assure you that if there is match, it will move the projects up the improvement list.
You know, I, I look at that and I think, I would love to put a path around the Riverbend area, you know, to where people can get out there and just enjoy that land. It's such beautiful land.
Yep, and we added the Crispin piece, and I don't think that has been incorporated fully, and so we can extend the path
Yeah.
slightly on the riverfront as well, so.
And just trails makes a big difference.
All right. Item two, identify trail segments to be funded and funding force construction timeline. So we've been doing these one-off, but I don't feel like we're quite at a plan yet, where we're like, okay, this is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, so year to year with budget and timing. I will say that I believe both of these, once we get, lead themselves to probably exceeding, well, lend themselves to at least asking the question, can we have dedicated funding so that parks and trails can move ahead once we have plans and budgets for both of these? So I think both of these can be updated and clarified and given, and quantified, and then we can determine if there is an appetite from the community to make those investments, or if we should just make those with general fund, matching dollars and grant dollars, or if we can ask our community to consider a level of contribution.
I think the start of that, Brian, is that we look at it from a, we should have a pretty, pretty aggressive twenty twenty-eight plan. What are, what are we doing each year, what are their goals? And we sit down with the people that are talking about, and say, here's what we, here's our priority one, two, three, and four. And we really go after that, and, and, you know, I don't think you, we want to put it on the election, the ballot until, what, two years?
I think it has to be an even year request, correct? Yeah, so it would be twenty-six at the earliest. You know, it can be any election, or I guess we'll find out election dates as well.
Yeah, it typically is done on the
August or November.
On the August primary. Because if it fails, then you can put it on November.
Yeah, and I think if, if it was there, we should have, this is what we're doing, this is what we've done in twenty-six, this is what we've done in twenty-seven, and this is our plan moving forward.
Okay.
Totally agree, I think if we're gonna ask for a millage, we need to show them the plan. If you pass the plan, this is what we intend to achieve for you, and we've got a little bit of operation so that we can take care of this network as it degrades over time, and make sure that we can keep it in good shape.
All right, well, I will bring you, coming up with that, will probably involve our manager, planner, and potentially outside assistants. I know other communities have done this with consultants, so that may require an RFP to help us draw that up and let's ink dry on it. So, put an RFP together and bring that to you as well. Davenport discussed trails and pedestrian movement. In essence, that's happening, right? I mean, the, the only remaining Davenport-esque trail segment is happening, correct? Along with the improvements that are going on on Sixty-Eighth Street, I believe they're filling in that last, so that is without a Davenport contribution.
Yep.
And us doing it, but at least it will provide safety.
Used by all Davenport students.
To support their movement. I do think we can go back to them, Dick has pointed out that at least that Craft Corridor Trails, one of our older and aging trails, and so as we get into maintenance, we can go back to them, say, hey, we've created this system, help us out. Do they pay taxes, or do they not pay?
No.
They don't, so even if we throw a millage on.
Yeah.
They, they're not gonna pay.
No.
Let's not leave with that, all right. Scheduled meeting with Kellerman Schools to discuss trails and pedestrian movement of students. I do believe we now have open communications with the schools. Even though with our first connectors to schools, there was some, I think, as there always is when you put in a trail. I think some people not wanting it in their backyard, or going by their kids' schools, and I think the experience has been that it's actually a positive in people's yards and so on, although we continue to see with this trailhead discussion on Main Street, not everyone wants those amenities.
But they've had that for years.
Years to them.
They've had from Glen Valley, they've had a pathway from Glen Valley into the schools, and they've also had the Paul Henry go through there. And then some of it's their property too, that they allowed, and they've never really had any problems.
So, unfortunately, Ms. Lindsay left, I was gonna ask her where we're at with that, but there is discussion about a trailhead parking lot near Main Street. And we'll see, and we'll probably be asked to contribute to that. And there's been informal discussions of that, that will come before us. And then we will hear the community input regarding the pros and cons of supporting that. Ultimately, it would be a village amenity that we're contributing to, but village residents are township residents and taxpayers, and certainly we have led the way on trails, and this would be a trail amenity. So I think we should at least give them credit for coming alongside us, they being both the school and the village, if this moves ahead and has majority support, so. Create a river trail designation, increase access, I would simply say, we haven't done that, but that can go into the RFP. The river trail is a part of that, so it's not just parks and paths, but it's the river trail as well, kind of creating this comprehensive vision for outdoor amenities and connectivity, so we'll keep that on there, the schools think. I'm gonna keep us rolling, I'm only given thirty minutes here. Expand Kellerman Community Green Park to include pickleball courts and splash pad, done. Is there anything else at Community Green we need to do, not do?
I think we just have to watch the courts.
More pickleball courts.
So we do have the postage stamp lot in front of the post office, that I'm told we could fit three to four additional courts in there. That could be an easy win. I also looked to the north, where the, the village has, you know, a large parcel of open space. That'd be separate amenity, not as contiguous, sometimes there is a critical mass to creating, you know, that energy, so maybe our postage stamp is better. I think over by our maintenance building, we might be able to fit a few in, so maybe we can look at additional pickleball in some of those areas, so I'll add.
There's certainly crossover in pickleball players and trail users, but it's not a hundred percent the same people. So I think, again, if we had a plan to go forward, hey, if this millage passes, we've also got six pickleball courts in the budget.
Good point.
You're gonna get a lot more votes, yes.
Totally true.
I'll throw in this as an odd curveball to Community Green, Barber School, for those of you are familiar, we do own somewhat of an orphaned amenity at this point, because when we sold the maintenance building to the village, Barber School, which is probably the only, well, it is historic school, might be the only remaining historic school in the township, is on those grounds, not in a very visible site, it isn't utilized or leveraged, so in that sense, and we're preserve, small P preserving history, but we're certainly not capital P preserving it to the sense that it's continues to erode its condition. There has been some discussion, could that be placed somewhere on Community Green, both from a visibility and novelty standpoint, but you can go all the way to Ada with their little red schoolhouse, you know, they have Manhandle money, and they put, you know, a half million dollars into it, but they retrofitted it, and now it's a pretty cool shop, concession stand, things like that. So I would put something with Barber School.
How about the blacksmith shop?
Well, and blacksmith, but Barber School's truly, Blacksmith's shop is a, is a demonstration shop, it's not historic. It's just a shed that we show people how a blacksmith works.
Well, it's one that was moved from the library.
But it was one time created to show people how blacksmithing works, it wasn't a blacksmith shop until it was created.
Using business, it wasn't a business being used as.
No, it wasn't a historical blacksmith shop in Kellodoy, they just thought it'd be cool during history days to show people the bellows, and they created a blacksmith shop, so.
I don't, I don't know if this is any good information, but I know that Byron Center has an older building that they have by their community center that they actually rent out for events. I don't know if that's something that the Barber School could ever be.
That's that railroad station, or the, that's the one near Seventy-Six and Byron Center.
Yeah.
Whistle stop. Whistle stop, that's.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's a good idea or bad, if it opens us to liability or whatever, but it's an idea.
And are we competing with other people who rent facilities? You know, we already get in a little bit with the community room at the library, but could we, it's not gonna be cheap, but at some point, do you invest in the history out of just
I think, I think it'd be cool to get, move it to the green community, I just don't know where, as I think about it.
Is there any way you could put it back by the playgrounds?
Near the, near the maintenance buildings makes the most sense, but we gotta wait for that wetland designation to go away.
I, I think a few areas, one, off the side of the parking lot, where we were gonna have our natural play area, off the back of the library parking lot, kind of. There's a corner, we could build a pad in there, so you had to have the library, and then off of the, you know, the other library, children's garden, kind of right there, you could probably sneak in a spot for it. We could put it on top of the hill, you know, kind of on the community green, that'd be the most visible spot. Would be another, and then I think over, my concern is you're starting to get behind everything when it goes back by the maintenance building. But it'd certainly be more visible.
If we did it at the library, though, we're gonna wanna, you're gonna have to clear a lot of trees, because the shade is what rots away.
Gotcha. And, yeah, we can decide whether we want to put siding on it, how true to history do you want it to be, can, you know, is it saljable, movable? Someone told me they don't think it could survive another move. But at least we can have a subgroup that looks at that, so I'll put Barber School and movement, better utilization. Is there a spot in the village that would be more visible? I mean, let's think about that, I don't think many of us thought of this, trailhead spot as being a spot, is there a spot in the community where we could better honor Barber School?
If they moved it up near their little sidewalk to nowhere, you know, between their maintenance building and.
Oh, it's been moved on-site already?
You know, move it forward.
Yeah.
So, that'd be a good spot too.
Something to think about. All right. We did grandfathered properties, working through this, lot size, building calculation, it was painful, but we did it. Create a plan and vision for agricultural lands along M thirty-seven eighty-fourth. We did have the subarea plan, I will say that I think, and we have that, whether it's truly the vision for that property, and then it just converted to the Ward Farm. I hate to say it, but it'd be nice to revisit that, as I look at those two farms, just one person speaking, I think. And then we have vacancies across the street in DNW Plaza, do we truly want to have commercial sprawl across M thirty-seven? Or do you say, let's have a different vision for that, one being, could be, and some of this we heard when we did the open houses for the subarea plan, is how do we maximize agricultural preservation there? Do we create those as ag, you know, rural preservation zones? So, it's along our busiest street, and if you were playing SimCity, you'd say that's where you put the strip malls and the apartments and so on. But we're also saying, we still have some farming, farms in our community. Do we want to give them a designation that would not have the developers knock down the door because the master plan says, no, that's farmland? And it goes all the way from there across the river to our, to Vincent, to Snow. You know, but we do have a rural preservation. You know, but we do have a rural preservation that comes almost to that. And we could just bring it right up to M thirty-seven. So do we want to do that? What would that mean? Would they get some tax relief? Would that be a disservice to them because it's their 401K in the sense that you're now down zoning my property? I've always joked that people love it when we upzone their property, because it adds value. But, uh, you know, if we downzone their property, are we taking value away? But what is the vision for the Ward and Rogers Farms?
Well, I think you should talk to them, which we didn't bother to do.
Well, yes, but we don't talk to anyone when we come up with visions.
We developed a plan on their property. They should have at least been informed.
Yep.
Now, I do know the Ward just upped his, uh, ag reservation.
PA one sixteen.
For so many years this fall. So doesn't look like there's any intent to go for a while.
Alright.
But you'd have to look at the development rights, how much that money is worth. And then if you went back to ag, and that's how you'd compensate them, then that in a way is a 401K for them. I mean, if you're fifty, sixty thousand dollar development rights per acre, that'd be a good sized chunk of money for them.
Well, and purchase of development rights, county has a lease on paper plan for that. So that's where they maintain ownership of the property. But you, rather than using a motion of the board to not develop the property, you actually purchase those rights. Rather than legislate them away, you purchase them and then they are able to continue ownership and farming. So I would like to keep that on there as a discussion. I think those and potentially, you know, even the Christman Farm, there are other farms that we might wanna look at. Are there ways to preserve those farms? And I think the subarea plan was a good exercise, but I don't know that it got us exactly where we needed to be. Complete transition to professional manager. We do have a manager on board.
I just said, we're still working on that. I said it loudly so she could hear.
I said, I'm still here.
Communication plan from a public relations firm. We didn't do that, but we do have at least a plan with newsletters and social media. And that is being rolled out. So do we wanna keep that on there? Do we want to monitor that? Do we want to have that as foundational and then progress from there? Or do we wanna put our energies elsewhere?
I think we should keep it on there, because I'd love to see that happen still.
Well, we have a plan.
Yeah, I wanna make sure that we continue it and it is. I think promoting what we're doing, what we're already doing, our ideas and our thoughts and things, I think the public of Kelowna would be all over that. So however we grow that.
Do we have a newsletter coming out this?
Yes.
This spring.
It should be coming out with the tax letters.
Okay.
So I probably will be reaching out to some of you for input to put into the letters.
I think we need to do that, continue to do that.
Yeah.
Maybe more, maybe more often than once a year.
Well, we were talking with every tax bill, because we're already sending out the letter, it would be.
Because that's the plan. Alright. Fun township promotion events through the Kelowna Chamber of Commerce and other community partners. We have our concerts, we have our chamber events. We've had a number of great internal events, I think now become part of the calendar. So I don't know that we need to keep that on there in the sense that it's done.
Every one of them. Really got kinda cool.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, but I think we can delete that because it's been accomplished. People think we need to do something additionally.
You can delete it.
Alright, and then improves all the water quality, trying to determine the options for new water sources. Where that is occurring, so I think we can delete it in the sense that there's already a plan and it's underway. So that is the current. What do we want? I guess that's an update of the review here of last term's plan. Are there things we could and should be doing as far as parks, trails, services, roads?
Well, the Community Green and then Dick brought up about trails being plowed in the wintertime. We have to figure out if we're gonna hire that out and every trail in the township's gonna be plowed. And then what we're gonna do as far as maintenance at the Community Green. Cause we held off on buying a lawnmower.
Okay. Other thoughts, ideas, guys, on fire department? I'm just throwing out headers. Uh, there is a, I will say there's discussions. I won't put it as a, a goal yet. But we are being briefed on response times for the ambulance service, so I guess just setting the table. We have our dedicated fire department, dispatch comes in, they go and help stabilize a person. But their job really is to get them into a wagon to go elsewhere, if, if needed to go elsewhere, to get them into a wagon. And we rely on private ambulance services to do that. And we have no control over where they stage these assets. Just like we have no control over how many calls they may have best intentions to have an asset close by. But it gets called to another community or there's dual calls, as we know even occurs with our staffing. It's hard to staff for the unknown. But the chief has raised discussions about could there be other service models for ambulance service? Thorn Apple to the South has dedicated ambulance service. They're literally next door. So should we be looking at additional or alternative service for ambulance service? Because we have found there are target response times and we're not hitting. I'd say we're hitting them, what, was it seventy to eighty percent of the time?
Seventy, eighty percent.
So, which means, good job if you're me as a high schooler, that you're, you know, you're not on the honor roll, but you're C student. Is one out of four good enough for what we need though?
But as someone whose mom lives in Gaines Township and just needed an ambulance ride, I don't think seventy to eighty is good enough.
Well, and here's the thing with the seventy to eighty, they're a hundred percent in twos and threes, which are not emergencies. The number ones are where they're low, the heart attacks, the strokes, the things like that.
So I would put ambulance service review.
Guess Thorn Apple's only six miles.
Table not quite digest, but we've got that on there.
Greg, what are the rough times for one, two and three? It's like thirty minutes or something for a three, isn't it?
That was eighteen.
Yes.
Number one is like twelve, number two is like sixteen, and three is eighteen to twenty-one. Somewhere around there.
To the twenties.
Off the top of my head.
We'll get them for you. Like I said, resist the full discussion, these are, I'm, we'll put it on our to do's. So ambulance service, anything else that?
We kind of, we talked about parks and trails already, so I feel like it's already on the list. It's just kinda changed some. But I think developing a trail millage request and better understanding how we wanna build out the rest of the trail network. What those costs are, forecasting them, to trustee Hermanette's point, having an aggressive, you know, three-year plan. This is how we wanna achieve it if the millage were to pass.
Yep. I will say, there's already discussions to have an RFP prepared that would do this, that would bring it to you, so. Do we want to, in an empty room, even though it's being recorded? I look at the Christman Farm and then the Whitneyville Gravel Pit. And we could, you know, any big open space and say that's either going to be a housing development or a park, depending on who shows up with a checkbook first. You know, in a fifty-year horizon. And I prefer to, if it's strategic and smart, there are pieces we should be buying. And that would create literally from the Thorn Apple River to Whitneyville, green space. And I know Farmer John's at least open to it, as long as he can keep farming it and so on. But it could, the Christman Farm, which backs up to the Whitneyville Gravel Pit, which goes all the way to Whitneyville. Could you have a, you know, Whitneyville to the river as preserved space? And what could that look like? Again, we're, just like the farms, I'm making plans for other people's property, but that's the business we're in. And should we at least approach them and say, have you ever thought?
Do we look at, do we look at buying property in different quadrants? There's a lot of property down in that area already. You know, what do we have, you know, say in the, uh, the northeast, northwest?
Well, I'll throw this out. I've already talked to the, uh, I can't even think of their name, Broadmore owners.
Yeah.
And said, hope you survive forever, but if you don't wanna be a golf course, come talk to us about being a park. Because again, can you imagine dropping in, you know, nine hundred homes? Or look at what's going on in Gaines on every open space. And I think all of us are saying, we're gonna do something different. As far as mega developments, apartment, you know, complexes of thousands of units.
We need to keep working on our zoning to keep that from occurring.
And I think whether it's farm preservation, it's all about open space. And I think in, in golf course, again, hope you are successful, but if you're not, who's the family that owns Broadmore?
Leatherman.
Leathermans, yeah.
Leatherman, so I was trying to think, I kept on seeing him, but.
I was gonna wait for him to ask me.
Yeah.
I did.
Meeting on Monday, uh, for water meter, off the record.
Good. Ninety-second.
Ninety-second.
Briarwood.
Yeah.
They own Briarwood as well.
Anything on M thirty-seven? This is a four-year plan. I think it's, we all realize that coming to ninety-second and, you know, a little bit beyond isn't optimal. And we want to focus on the doable, you know, the smart goals achievable. Is anything with M thirty-seven need to be on, other than simply the current improvements? Are there things in response to that? Are there things in addition to that that we should be doing on M thirty-seven?
I think if we do, after M thirty-seven's done at ninety-second, we should do a new traffic study in San Antonio. And so you're, they're gonna be shocked at the.
Any other, uh, traffic needs that are so obvious, we should at least write them down. You know, talk about a hundred street going through. I look at, again, uh, the village property, ninety-second going through to the school property. Are there any things that are worth talking about? Or at times we've, Main Street extending, should we go talk to US Golf Cards and preserve a corridor? So if we ever wanna do a twenty-ninth street, now that's contrary to preserving those farms.
Yeah.
Should we at least be talking to US Golf Cards about if Main Street could go and have a secondary connector there?
I would say yes to that. I think the highest and best use is commercial on that side. So I would be in favor of future development there. And I guess sticking with the traffic theme, I don't know that it needs to be a township board priority. But I'm gonna keep working hard to get a traffic signal at a hundred and eighth and M thirty-seven before my daughter turns fifteen.
There is currently a traffic study being done at that location.
Yeah, that's because of me.
Good job, Tim.
Understood.
Yeah, cause there's times of the day, I don't even go that way.
Someone whose daughter, I have a similar intersection with my daughter totaled her car. And it will be eliminated in the M thirty-seven construction. So the tree value will now be right in, right out, rather than leapt out. Alright, so parks, trails, fire, police, anything? I don't think we're at third shift or additional police coverage. Our calls are minimal and responses are good. Crime, not an issue. I'm just going through, um, events, village, school relations.
I think we need to keep working on, we're getting a better relationship with the village, reestablishing. And I hope the school is starting to come back to the relationship we had up until, you know, six, seven years ago.
I will say, you know, we meet monthly with all those entities. We do continue to sometimes be surprised by where the school wants to do things. So I don't know if, and what the implications of that are from an engineering standpoint, utility standpoint. So I think we can continue on that. I don't know that we can define it.
No, I wouldn't say write it down.
Yep. Staff wise, staffing, uh, anything, I guess I'm just trying to.
I would, I would love to see us do a compensation study for our staff.
Okay.
Because we have great people who are incredibly knowledgeable and to replace them would cost us a lot of money.
Yeah, and I guess to piggyback on that, I feel like I hear we have a pretty rapid turnover rate in the fire department as they're going to often larger communities. So I think we're investing a lot in brand-new firefighters to train them. They start to understand and be really good firefighters and then they move on. So maybe we have a different compensation strategy where, you know, we're a dollar more than the next bigger community because we're investing so much in the training. There's a true cost there, so better understanding what that all looks like.
Okay. I will say, yes, so I think both for staff and fire department, we can do compensation studies. Say it publicly, we are currently looking at specifically to our chief as well, who has helped modernize, professionalize our department or continue that progression and certainly has deep roots in the community. So we wanna make sure that that starts at the top. So that will be something I think you'll see as well soon coming forward. Everything else will probably come down, you know, do we need to be doing anything as far as upkeep of any building, purchasing properties? I'm just, again, thinking, are there any things we're overlooking?
Is there any roof maintenance that they patched up and it was okay for now, that we're gonna have to look for the future? Or reconstructing over by the fire department that way?
Barber School's gonna need some work.
Yeah, that's on here, yeah.
And it's, it's, it's just a porch. It wasn't prepped right by the previous contractor, so the paint peeled. So I'd have it done properly.
Okay.
It's on my to-do list to just walk this whole building and create a list. But, um, I don't know, hopefully sometime in the next couple of months, I'll have an extra hour and get her done.
Alright, trying to think. Arts, public safety, anything? Well, what I will do is try to bring an updated spreadsheet. We'll walk through it and wordsmith it. And then see if that spurs any additional thought as you go home or if you go to other communities and why don't we do this? How come we do that? We can return, I will say here is, again, I think Deep Roots is a fantastic addition to the community. To our credit, we created an agribusiness zoning that allowed them to do much of what they're doing there. I look at, is the Old Whitneyville Bible, is that currently being used?
It's sold.
But is it?
They got, it's for daycare.
It's gonna be a daycare.
It's gonna be a daycare.
We, we approved it.
So I'm driving through Ada down Grand River Drive to go to a trails meeting in Ada. And they have the little red schoolhouse. There's a preschool that's kind of a farm school experience center there. And at some point, if, these are two privately owned buildings, but I think it would be cool if that Whitneyville Bible Church, which is now a preschool building, could partner with Deep Roots and create a daycare center that is a farm experience, you know, teaching kids about food and things like that. And, or doing weekend activities. So not necessarily in our wheelhouse, but I think, how do we support it, things like that? We did that for Deep Roots with a zoning. Could we allow something like a, you know, some sort of a school experience there? Would be a cool thing in our community preschool that you go see the cows.
Cool thing for the daycare too. That, that'd be.
Would be.
Yep, I think everyone would love that experience for their kids, so.
If you, if you talk to them and they need help with something like that, I, that is exactly what the Kuzier Greenhouse is doing, is starting this year.
Cool.
They're doing all farm, yep, how grow things.
A property immediately adjacent, or is it that?
It's all right there.
Oh, cool, same, so.
It's not a school per se, it's classes that people can come to, but kids can come to.
Kuziers?
Mm-hmm, Kuzier Greenhouse, yeah.
I know them. Alright, alright folks, that's good for tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So is there any public comment? See none?
Have a good journey.
All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, goes no.